So today we are going to be doing chapter four. Now this is going to be a really lengthy chapter and it has a lot of information even myself, it took me a long time to understand this. So hopefully I can explain it well. Firstly, we have fluid mazak model. Now since we cannot look at the cell membranes clearly ourselves under a microscope. So we use like this model to um uh explain the passive and active movement of substances between the cell and the extracellular environment and then cell to cell in interactions and cell signaling. So the structure basically includes phospholipids which are lipids and it has a polar head and two non-pure fatty acid tails. Now the water interacts with the polar head and forms hydrogen bonds and the non fatty acid, non-polar fatty acid chains basically face away from the water. Now when there is just like one single layer as seen over here and there is like a lot of phospholipids present is going to form this my cells which are basically spherical in shape. And if there is like um water above it as well, it's just going to form this bilayer structure as you can see right here. There is like a bilayer structure and if you look at it from the side, it's going to look like this. So uh there are like two phospholipids joined. Like the tails interact and the heads are away from each other. Now this basically makes up all the cell surface membranes. And the cell surface membrane, uh we talked about it in chapter two as well as seven nanometers. And made up of like other components as well, mainly it's phospholipids. And these form compartments and the bilayer forming cell surface membrane establishing boundary for each cell. There are membranes present inside each organelle as well, inside the cell which are called endomembranes. Now the structure of membranes include these proteins. These are extrinsic and intrinsic, we don't really need to learn these terms but extrinsic on the phospholipid membrane like this. And then the intrinsic would be inside the phospholipid bilayer. Then we have glycolipids which are lipids with glycoprotein chains coming out. I have to change my code. Like these chains coming out which are made up of glucose. And then we have structure that you guys are asked to draw in the exam. Basically when to explain it. So I'll just show you that one sec. This one. So basically when they ask you to draw a structure, you're going to draw it like this. I'll just send this picture later in the chat as well. So there's like the phospholipid bilayer, you're going to show the you're going to show my you're going to show this phospholipid bilayer first and then you're going to show the glycolipids present glycoproteins and then intrinsic and extended proteins. And also cholesterol like this. You can show the uh phospholipids in like straight chains as well like this. It's not necessary to make it like curly. And these are like um four point, five points present here. So you make sure to like mention these five points in there. Now let's look at each of its functions. So the phospholipids basically form a bilayer as I told you. Then we have cholesterol which helps to regulate membrane fluidity. And these are present um in between the phospholipid molecules. And but these are not also present in like prokaryotes. Then we have glycolipids which are basically lipids with car- attached. And the the chains that are coming outside are basically made up of carbohydrates which form the hydrogen bonds with the extracellular environment to stabilize the membrane. And glycoproteins are basically proteins with carbohydrate chains attached and these proteins are basically protruding out of the cell surface membrane. And this it has the same function. It basically forms hydrogen bonds with the water to stabilize the cell membrane. Then we have proteins. Proteins are basically for the use purpose of uh transferring movement of large polar molecules which are not water soluble. And it has like other, it takes part in active transport and then also facilitated diffusion. We're going to discuss that later. Now the purpose of cholesterol, we'll like look into it more. So cholesterol is between those phospholipid bilayers. So when there's like when uh there is like a colder environment, we know that the fatty acids would start, you know. The kinetic energy will decrease. So the fatty acid will become closer together, meaning like the phospholipid would become closer together. And this would make the cell membrane more rigid. And when the cell surface membrane becomes more rigid, it has like chances of breaking or fracturing which we do not want, which is why cholesterol molecules are present in between these phospholipid bilayers. So if there is phospho- uh cholesterol present in between and the temperature drops, it's going to basically repel these phospholipids apart so that it stays permeable and stays fluid as well. Then glycolipids and glycoproteins, basically this are cell signaling, is used in cell signaling. And then endocytosis, cell adhesion and stabilization. Cell signaling we'll discuss later and then endocytosis and exocytosis. They have like these receptors present to which these uh pathogens can even bind on and like get inside the cell. It also acts as like cell markers or antigens for cell to cell recognition as well. Proteins include channel proteins and carrier proteins. Channel proteins are used in facilitated diffusion only. And then carrier proteins are used facilitated and active transport as well. Cell signaling we'll discuss at the end. Now we have the movement of molecules out of and into the cells. So first we have diffusion which is basically the net movement of molecules from a region of higher concentration to the to a region of lower concentration. And the molecules or the ions move down the concentration gradient. And diffusion basically happens across the cell membrane. So whatever molecule just not normally just passes through the cell membrane, that's called diffusion and it's like down the concentration gradient. So there are some uh factors which affect the rate and this is like the steepness of concentration gradient. Which means that if there is like outside the cell, there are like a lot of glucose like water molecules present. Or you could say glucose molecules present, they can easily pass through the cell surface membrane and inside the cell. As they, it would have a less glucose concentration, right? So if there is like a high concentration, the glucose molecules will move down much more quickly and the diffusion would diffusion rate would be faster. Then temperature, basically temperature increases the kinetic energy of the molecule. So then molecules would have a higher energy and they would move much faster. Then surface area, the hi- the larger the the surface area is the we can take the example of um micro villi present inside the intestine which basically increases the surface area for absorption of um water and other substances as well. Then properties of molecules or ions. So if there's like a large molecule present, it would diffuse more slowly than the smaller ones because the larger ones would need more space to move basically between the phospholipid bilayer and since the phospholipid bilayer has like a hydrophobic core. So the, it would be difficult for it to move through it. Next we have facilitated diffusion which is basically it transfers large polar molecules such as glucose and amino acids and also at times it would if there's like a lot of water needed to be transferred, some water can also go through it because we all know that water is also um a polar molecule. And then ions such as sodium ions and chloride ions are also transported easily from the these protein channels present. And through basically using facilitated diffusion. Facilitated diffusion will use both channel proteins and carrier proteins. Remember this, this is the major difference between facilitated diffusion and active transport. And these are basically highly specific. So if there is like sodium and that needs to be transported, it will have like a separate channel present inside the cell surface membrane as compared to uh nor, yeah, so if there is like sodium needed to be passed down, there will be a separate channel and then if chloride ions need to be passed down, it would have another channel present. The, these have like hydrophobic layers. I will show you a bit. This part of the uh protein is hydrophobic and this part is also hydrophobic as we know that the phospholipid bilayer has a hydrophobic core. So these two form interactions which also stabilizes the membrane. But this is hydrophilic part of the, I'll make it another color. This part of the channel protein is hydrophilic. So it also has water present which makes polar ions transfer easily inside the membrane. Then we have carrier proteins. These are basically proteins which can also change shape. So in case of facilitated diffusion, you won't require energy to change its shape because it's basically yeah, so it's basically open to the high concentration area and the molecule will just go inside and then easily like just go down the concentration gradient. So we won't need ATP which is a form of energy to change the protein's shape. Next step we have process of osmosis. So osmosis is basically the net movement of water from a region of high water potential to high water potential to lower water potential or you could say down a water potential gradient through a partially permeable membrane. Now the word partially permeable membrane is very important to mention in the case of osmosis, otherwise you will lose your marks. It is a form of diffusion, but we have to say that it's through a partially permeable membrane and it's all, it only applies for water. Now the water molecules basically move if there, ever there is like a higher percentage of water molecules and lower solute concentration, the water molecules will move from that region to a region where there is a higher solute potential. So you can also like substitute the words, like if it says high water potential, that means high water concentration. But if you say high water concentration and high solute concentration, that's just going to mess like mix up the terms a lot. So you can just say high water potential. That means that it has like more water molecules present in that region. As you can see, there is like less solutes present over here and more water. So the water will move from here, from this region right to left. Because there is less water molecules present and more solute present. So the water will move from right to left in this case. And there is like a partially permeable membrane which is represented by dotted line. Now water potential will always be negative and we know that dilute or you could say distilled water or pure water has a concern, a water potential of zero kilopascals. And kilopascal is basically the unit used to measure uh tell the water potential and the more negative the value is, we will never have like a positive value, we'll always have a negative value when we're talking about water potential. So the more negative the water potential is going to be, the more uh the low, we will say that it's like it has a lower water potential. And the uh yeah, that's it. Then we have active transport. This is basically movement of molecules or ions through the cell membrane from a region of lower concentration to a region of higher concentration using energy from respiration or you could say using ATP only. Now active transport requires carrier proteins only. And uh unlike you know facilitated diffusion which required your protein channels as well. Now these proteins change shape using the energy obtained from ATP. And as you can see, the molecules are moving from lower concentration right here to a region of higher concentration. Active transport helps to move uh is used in reabsorption of useful molecules and ions into the blood after filtration into the kidney tubules. We don't need to le- it's just an example and then absorption of some products of digestion from the digestive tract. As we know that the bloodstream would already have like a high concentration, but we still need more to maintain it. So that would be obtained through active transport. Then loading of sugar from photosynthesizing cells of leaves into floam tissue for transport. This point we will discuss this more in um chapter seven. This and the last point as well, loading inorganic ions from soil into root hairs. These are both examples which would be further discussed in chapter seven. Then endocytosis and exocytosis, these both are examples of bulk transport. Which is basically larger quantities of material transported inside the cell and outside the cell. Uh and this is, these both require ATP as well. So examples of these large quantities would be large molecules such as proteins or polysaccharides which are transported from inside the cell or towards the outside cell environment. And then whole cells, bacteria enter the cell through uh using endocytosis and then parts of cells as well. We will first discuss endocytosis. Endocytosis is basically the process in which the cell surface membrane enculfs the material and forms a small sac or a vesicle. Over here it's written endocytotic, endocytic vacu- vacuole. We can also say vesicle, that's completely fine. There are like two forms, phagocytosis and pinocytosis. Phagocytosis is basically the bulk intake of solid material by a cell. So this could include like a bacteria or something which is engulfed by the cell. And the cells specialized in this process are called phagocytes. We will discuss this more in immunity which is the last chapter for AS. And then vacuoles are formed from and are called phagocytic vacuoles. Uh this is like the, an example would be as I said that bacteria engulfed by phagocytic white blood cells. Then pinocytosis is the bulk intake of liquids from outside the cell. And the vesicle is formed which has like all the liquid con- site of like the watery cell environment, external environment fluids and also the liquid and small like particles as well. This is an example of phagocytosis because this is like a solid material entering the cell. What happens is basically the cell membrane folds inwards and it creates like this um ball shape kind of and the content basically comes inside and it slowly it moves with the help of ATP, the cell membrane changes shape and like the cell the vesicle, vesicle basically pinches off and inside the cell. And then it goes to its ta- target. If it's like a bacteria, it would be engulfed and it's engulfed, right? So the lysosome would be attached to it and then it would digest the bacteria. Then for exocytosis, it is the process by which materials are removed from and transported out of the cell. So it is like the opposite of endocytosis. The substances to be released from the cells are enzymes, hormones and also cell wall building materials. The, these are packaged into secretory vesicles by your Golgi body. We learned about this in chapter one. And then here they fuse with the cell membrane and release their contents. So the vesicle is going to travel from the Golgi body which packages all these things, like hormones are basically synthesized proteins, right? So it will be packaged inside a vesicle and the vesicle is going to go through the cell membrane. And over there it will fuse with the cell membrane and like combine with the phospho- because uh the vesicle, the outside layer of the vesicle and the cell membrane has like the same components, right? So it will fuse with that and they come the contents of that vesicle will be expelled out of the cell. As you can see, the Golgi body releases a secretory vesicle. This is like a case of an enzyme, right? So the vesicle contains enzyme. Now this goes where is this? This goes towards the cell surface membrane and then it fuses with it and the contents are released outside. Now the changes, the changes that happen to the cell surface membrane is caused by ATP. So make sure to learn that like you have to use the word ATP, not energy. This is all P paper three stuff, like we don't really need to learn this. Investigating and everything, I'm going to be skipping this. Investigating diffusion. Oh before that, I will show you the mind map that I have made. We can use this. I've made this and like it's like a really quick mind map sort of and this usually also comes inside MCQs as well. They ask you something like this as well. So if the process requires energy, then yes. If it's yes, then it's like an active process, right? So active transport, exocytosis, endocytosis and its two forms which are phagocytosis and pinocytosis. Now you, uh the question come, does this process require protein? If yes, then it is a protein. It is, it is an active transport. And if it doesn't require a protein, like a protein carrier or protein channel, then it's just exocytosis and endocytosis. Then if the process does not require energy, like does this process require energy? No. So that's going to be a passive process which includes simple diffusion, osmosis and facilitated diffusion. I don't know why I wrote energy over here. Now the, the next question would be, does the process require proteins? If it's a no, then if the process does not require protein, then it's simple diffusion or osmosis. And if it does require a protein which in this quiz would be channel proteins and carrier proteins both, then it will be a facilitated diffusion. This is like a easier mind map sort of to remember. I'll send this later as well. Next we have surface area to volume ratio. We get this a lot. And it's a bit um confusing as well. So basically the surface area and volume ratio is important especially for like multicellular organisms because we know that as the volume increases, the surface area needs to also be increased. So if you take the case of um the intestine, we increase the surface area by um having micro villi present inside it. And we basically need it because we need a higher surface area than the volume. So to calculate the surface area to volume ratio, basically calculate surface area first which is six and then the volume comes out as one. So you, basically six is to one would have like a higher surface area to volume ratio. This has a lower surface area to volume ratio and then the third one, this larger cube will have a much lower surface area to volume ratio. So the diffusion inside so the higher the surface area, the wa- surface area to volume ratio there is, the faster the diffusion or the transfer of substances will take place. That's like the easiest way to learn this. They were uh the general example for this is like using a cube or a cube void. Usually the cylinder example doesn't come, but it's best to like just learn this formula for calculating surface area and volume for cylinder and uh for cylinder and you know how to calculate it as well. So that you guys know how to, if it comes in the exam, you guys can do it. So the formula for cylinders, surface area is two pi, pi R square and plus two pi R H. Two pi R H is for this part, the vertical part and then two pi R's, two times pi R square is for the two circular surfaces right here. And then for volume is just pi R square H. Then investigating surface area with agar, this is also paper three, but basically if there we, we know the general trend of it. So they just ask you like there is like this multiple uh blocks present of agar and they were like stained and put inside water. And they're going to be asking you, they're going to give the dimensions of each cube as well and they're going to ask you which will have which will decolorize first or the water will have like the water will change the color faster. You just have to like learn, calculate the volume to surface area in those questions and like get uh assume like choose the correct answer then. Then this is estimating, this is also paper three. Paper three, paper three. Then we have to investigate this. So plant cells, investigating plant cells, osmosis. So the water moves inside. If you put, there's like a vacuum present which has most of the water content in a plant cell, right? So if you put it inside pure water solution, the water will move inside the cells because from a region of higher water potential to a region of lower water potential. And the vacuum basically contains a lower water potential because it has water and other assimilates as well which the cell forms. So as the water, as the cell is placed inside the pure water, the water will move inside the cell, but the cell will, the cell will just, the vacuum will expand and the cell wall will become turgid. Like it would just expand in size just a little bit and it will resist. It will also provide like pressure which and making it turgid. And if you put it inside a more like in a solution which has like less water potential, the water from inside the cell will move outside the cell and that would cause the cell protoplasm to shrink. Now the protoplasm includes basically the cell ser- includes everything inside the cell. So the cell surface membrane and the vacuole and its nucleus, everything will just like come inside. And once like it will start to decrease, this is like plasmolysis. When the cell surface membrane detaches from the cell wall, this is called plasmolysis. And then when it's fully plasmolyzed, the cell membrane would just be inside the cell wall. The cell wall will just stay the same. So this causes wilting inside a plant. As the cell wall is supposed to be giving it the structure and everything. Then investigating osmosis in animal cells. Now the animal cells just have like um a normal cell membrane present, right? So it will, it does not provide like structure to the se- uh to the cell. So once you put it inside like a dilute of, in a solution of high water potential, the water is just going to move inside. Okay, let's see this. Now hypertonic basically means that the cell has cell has a high water potential and the outer environment of the cell has a lower water potential. So the water moves outside the cell and the cell starts to shrink in size and this causes the cell to become uh shriveled as you can see right here. And the water just moves outside. So the cells basically lose their shape as well. Then if there is like a isotonic solution, you guys need to learn these terms as well. If there's like a isotonic solution, then the water potential outside the cell and water potential inside the cell is the same. So the net movement of water from inside the cell and the water coming outside the cell would be the same. So there would be no change in the structure of the cell and the cell will remain normal. Then in hypertonic solution, we will have a higher water potential outside the cell and lower water potential inside the cell. So the water will move inside the red blood cells, okay? And this will cause the cell to expand in size because it's ha- the water potential is increasing and there is like a lot of trigger pressure you could say. And the cell just bursts because there is no resistance to this. Like the cell wall basically provides strength to the structure, but this in this case, there is no cell wall present. So the cell just bursts or lysis, you could say. And there's like this comparison table, really nice. So cell membrane is present in both and in both cases, it is composed of the same things. Then we have cell wall which is only present in plant cells and is fully permeable. So it doesn't affect really the movement of water, but it basically provides strength only. And it's absent in animal cells. Then osmosis can occur in both plant cells and animal cells. And if the cell is placed in a solution with lower water potential, water will leave the cell in the case of plant cells, water will leave the leaf cell through partially permeable membrane and by osmosis and the volume of the cell will decrease. And the protoplasm shrinks or pulls away from the cell wall. The term protoplasm needs to be used when talking about uh the cell losing water. That's like the best way to explain it. And the cell becomes plasmolyzed. And in the case of um animal cells, the water leaves again through the partially permeable cell surface membrane through osmosis and the volume of cell decreases and the cell just shrinks in size. There is no like proper term for it. Cell placed in solution with uh high water potential. So the plant cells, in, in the case of plant cells, the water will enter the cell through the partially permeable membrane through osmosis again. And then volume of cell will increase and the protoplasm expands and pushes against the cell wall. And the cell wall just withstands this pressure. And the cell wall just withstands this pressure, this is called turgid pressure. And then pressure increases until cell is rigid and firm, now this just uh means that the cell is turgid now. And the cell is fully inflated with water and can. And no more water enters the cell and this just makes the net movement of water outside and inside the cell equal. In the case of uh animal cells however, the water will move inside the cell. And the volume of the cell will increase, it will increase and increase. Since there is no cell wall present, the cell will just burst because there is a limit to how much water it can contain. And that is it, now I will show you a few other things, we have cell signaling still left, right? Okay, first we will look at endomembranes, this is basically a summarized form of. Uh be- you could say that's the chapter one content as well. So it is, this is endomembranes which are basically membranes which encloses a structure within a cell. Okay, so endomembranes are uh stra- me- basically the membrane which encloses structures within a cell. And for this even there is like a mind map, so if there are no pores present. And it has a single membrane, so it will uh transport enzymes. And what transports enzyme, it's the Golgi vesicle. And an example would be lysosomes, which is like a very important example. And then if it's single, there is no pore pores present and a single membrane. It for, it does lipid synthesis, then it's S C R or you could say smooth endoplasmic reticulum. Now enclose a structure within the cell possesses pores, allows exit of M R N A, this is the nucleus. And then possesses pores and proteins and does protein synthesis, that's the rough endoplasmic reticulum. Which has ribosomes present as well. We left this part, so basically if there is no pores present and a double membrane, it allows oxygen to enter, that's the mitochondria. And if it allows carbon dioxide to enter, that's the chloroplast. That's basically very simple as well, I'll be sending this as well. Then we have a simplified structure of cell signaling. This, so cell signaling is basically how uh cells communicate with each other, okay? And for this, the first step is that the uh harm. We'll take an example of a hormone, basically, so the hormone is basically, travels towards the target cell. And over there, on the cell surface membrane, these receptors are present. These receptors are present right here and over here the uh. Hormone basically comes and binds on the receptor and you can say a hormone or a ligand, a ligand is the general term, let me write it like that. Ligand binds, so it's basically a ligand receptor binding. And this divides the G protein, which travels towards the enzyme present on the cell surface membrane. Now this enzyme once is activated, it sends out secondary messengers. And these secondary messengers basically activate uh. Secondary enzymes and then uh tertiary enzymes and this activates, this is basically called a cascade reaction. So it uh there are like three secondary messengers, right? These are going to activate a few enzymes and then these enzymes will activate so many more enzymes. And then these enzymes will activate four enzymes, so this is basically a cascade reaction. Which also amplifies, so there's like three enzyme molecules first that which will activate five and then five will activate ten more. It's like a cascade reaction, one, one reaction followed by another and then also increasing in size as well. And then it just basically uh performs the response as well. We have another one. So this is like a much more simpler, like you can see the cascade reaction right here, it's like increasing as well. And once the ti- uh once there's like uh the enzyme activated required for the targets, target within the cell. Then the cell just produces a response, so you just need to learn like the general steps about it. You don't need to learn specific examples because the paper like our syllabus doesn't ask us to remember any specific examples. Most of the cell signaling part is discussed in A two, like there are examples as well. So you just need to learn the concept and like the general steps behind it. And that's it, if you guys like. Have any questions, you guys can ask. For A S level notes, you can use like the Z Notes website as well, it has like concise notes and then you can use. Save my exams notes as well and then there is another website, Veeble Bio. I think that's correct, so use, you can use that as well, that website has like concise notes as well, that's really good. Okay, so like the pictures that I showed you right now, these are from the video YouTube channel of. Uh Otter Bio Tutor, Otter Bio Tutor Tutor is like the best channel to learn bio. And then the other channel that you can try is Behology is B E H L O G Y. The last website I mentioned was Veeble Bio, W W E D L Y. Alright. If there isn't any question, then we can end the session. Alright, thank you guys for joining.